I wanted to talk about the new short-term rental law. So, in the debate leading up to the adoption of this law, we spent a lot of time talking about the regulations so-called whole home rentals. The regulations that were passed put certain limitations on those whole home rentals. And in the regulations that were passed, that came to mean only whole structures or apartments. But not regulated as a whole home is acceptable, even though those are one of the most, if not the most, common type of rental unit in the city. What did you think about that decision and would you revisit it? Starting with you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Washington.
I would personally revisit it because we have a whole lot of things going on for us with Airbnb's and it's taken away from what the culture of New Orleans is for us the neighborhoods. So, right now, it's not naturally New Orleans. It's just New Orleans. So, I think that, give an example, one neighborhood, one block, has only two homeowners that are still in their homes. And the entire block now is Airbnb's. So, those two homeowners are older people and it's kind of scary for them to come out and every day see new faces. So, the neighborhood is gone. It's no more New Orleans-style neighborhoods. So, I would totally revisit that.
The entire short-term rental thing is one big scam, I think, on property owners. It should not have happened and if elected, I'd even best get it shut down either in law or I would sue because I think the simple fact that the city council has determined that the French Court deserves protection from SDRs, but the rest of us don't, sets up a very clear violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. So, we're not getting equal protection or equal treatment under law. And that would be a real clear-cut case if there's any lawyer who wants to play pro bono. As far as it goes, these are businesses. Businesses belong to be regulated like businesses. As far as the function of people being able to rent out part of their houses, we've had the laws on the books since the 1950s on our current charter, the state as well, for boarding houses. That's what they do, that's what they are, they're already regulated. This was purely a giveaway because in this particular case, the crimes were being committed by mostly well-off white people who wanted to get a few more bucks versus poor black people who would just go to jail. So, we didn't enforce the law, we just changed it.
This issue has been debated in the council for many years. It went to the City Planning Commission several times. There were multiple, multiple hearings where, with packed chambers, I was there, I sat through many meetings as the Legislative Director in District C. People who were doing it, who were poor and just trying to make a living, people who were against it in neighborhoods, people that had competing industries who were against it, and, you know, people who were just, you know, in their neighborhood and wanted to do it to make some extra money. So, there's a lot of different interests on this subject. I think as your council member, what the job is to bring people together to come up with a solution. That ordinance passed in April and I just think it would be premature before any data really comes in. Enforcement has just started, mainly in the French Quarter, and, you know, to say right now without the proper information that you're going to just repeal the whole thing would be premature.
I would revisit it. As I understand the way that the ordinance is intended to work, is you have a whole home rental or you can have your home being rented out in part while you were living there. And the idea of having a double on the other side that isn't regulated is an end-around with the rules meant to accomplish. And I have a problem as a lawyer and as somebody who wants to protect neighborhoods with having one set of regulations that applies to one group of people and a different set of regulations that applies to somebody else. So, to the extent that a double is not regulated, it ought to be followed under the same regime and we ought to be looking at how to regulate this to make sure that we're being as fair to neighbors as we possibly can here.
Airbnb is a thing that happens all around the country, so why is it a problem down here? So, the reason it's a problem down here is because the neighborhoods have such an identity that when Airbnb comes in, that identity is torn a little. You know, like Tonya alluded to, there's more than one street in the city that is now basically row Airbnb. It's not a neighborhood anymore. So, that lends a lot of problems to the process. There's no continuity of the residents, there's a lot of safety issues, there's a lot of minor crime issues, you know. You always hear about the frat boys, you know, that rent a big house and they all get drunk and, you know, one's throwing up on the lawn and one, you know, playing loud music. Those are real instances in this city because we're a tourist city. So, people come down, they rent Airbnb places and they treat them like their own house, but it's not their own house and it's not their own neighborhood. So, we definitely need to revisit it, scrap the original plan, no matter how much work was done on it, and get back to the basics and rebuild it.
I liken the Airbnb issue to the Uber issue. I liken the Airbnb issue to our affordable housing issue. Why do I say these things? If we're going to mandate how many people can take advantage of using Airbnb, which is what we're effectively talking about right now, is limiting the ability for people to be able to exercise this particular right. We should also look at limiting the right of people to use Uber. You know how many cab companies went out of business and are going out of business because of Uber? But we're not discussing that at the same level that we're discussing Airbnb. Also, affordable housing. Is anybody arguing that we should make certain that there's a certain amount of affordable housing in every single neighborhood in the city besides myself? Inclusionary zoning should be addressed in the same way that Airbnb is being addressed. We need it and we should have it. Thank you.
The city council, I've seen more zoning matters go against in terms of both communities than you've seen in a long time. The new master plan was recently adopted, so it's two parts. How do you use that new master plan and its overlay to protect the integrity of the total land use in neighborhoods? And then, secondly, on the affordable housing case, early 90s, Point 91 was, the military was passed to create the NIF Housing Fund. And how do you use NIF and CBDG to target communities to make sure that affordable housing, or we have a funded affordable housing plan to deal with gentrification and the fact that New Orleans is the eighth most expensive city in America to live in?
I'll just say it, the master plan's a piece of crap. But the reason is because all master plans are just junk. They're just an exercise in academia for a small group of people who want to control what everyone else is doing, even if they don't want them to. And if you look at our master plans, they've always been junk. The 1970 Master Plan literally called for bulldozing everything uptown except for St. Charles Avenue because they just didn't have any value to it. So, if you live in Carrollton, I hope since 1970, we found some value. These things are, just as they're framed as being good tools, they can be dangerous tools. And the fact is that cities grow organically, they develop organically. The success of New Orleans, the mixed-use success that's made our city great, was an organic thing. It's still these regulations that don't look like Houston, but at the same time, though, no one needs one little group telling everyone, "Well, this area's going to be only residential. This area's going to be only this." That's not how cities work.
I was here after Katrina when my own home flooded in Broadmoor and the planning process to create the master plan, where hundreds of people came. And since that time and to today, where many, many different organizations and neighborhood groups and individuals and stakeholders have inputted in that process. We have a very inclusive process because of our master plan. So, I think that, you know, that is a guiding force for me as I was the land use and zoning staff person in District C. And, you know, having that background is very useful for going into the council and knowing how the land use process works. And, you know, as far as the NIF goes, you know, part of the short-term rentals ordinance was to put money into the NIF and increase that. And so, I will just say that, you know, the key part of that ordinance was to get the data. And I actually drafted an amendment at the last moment to get that data from the platforms that will allow the enforcement. But again, very complicated issues in a short amount of time. I have asked for the master plan and the land use.
Whether you like the master plan or not, it has the force of law. I want to repeat that. The master plan has the force of law. That means our job as city council people, whose job is to legislate, is to enforce that which has the rule of law. We need to be following the master plan. If there are things that need to be changed in the master plan because it's a living, breathing document, then let's bring those to the council. We can talk about amendments and I know Keith Twitchell's here and has all of his things that went into the new master plan. So, we can do all that, being shown by Patrick right now. In addition to the question about the NIF and the community developed block grants, the thing you have to worry about is the federal government is downsizing of community development block grants. So, we need to be looking other places to credits that we can get through the state, through other revenue sources, and maybe we'll get to transportation later on as another means to making sure we're solving our housing crisis.
Joe's right. The master plan does have force of law, so we are bound by that. But that doesn't mean that we need to stick to it if it's not working. Like I always say, all our is not good luck. So, we really need to make sure for our citizens' benefit that this master plan is actually doing good for the city, not just being good because it looks good. So, as far as all the NIF and all that, I agree with Aline, you know, the money's coming in from Airbnb and going to that. But we do need to look for additional revenue sources. We need to make sure, we always have to have our hand up in a way. You know, we always, you know, I've run a lot of nonprofit-type organizations, a lot of volunteer, I did a lot of door knocking, a lot of phone call. We don't need to be intimidated by doing that at the city level. We can go to the state, we can go to the feds, we can go to various housing groups to make sure that we create an affordable housing program that actually keeps everybody on an equitable playing field.
I was a board member with the Neighborhood Partnerships Network during the master planning process. I got to interact with a lot of neighborhood associations as they went through the Goody Clancy meetings and so forth. I personally, you know, in my 18 years of being here, I believe that the master planning process is probably one of the most comprehensive I've seen. I thought it was one of the most equitable processes I've seen and I'm proud of it. I agree with you, Joe, that it has the force of law and we should abide by it and support it. In terms of affordable housing, the NIF funding and the CBDG funding and even the low-income housing tax credit funding still hasn't yielded us what we need in order to have a more affordable city. We are still 30,000 units of affordable housing short. Again, that's 30,000 units of affordable housing are missing from our inventory. I believe we should use our blighted property to fill that gap. Thank you.
I totally agree that it is a working document and it's ongoing. But I disagree with the fact that it's so much verbiage that those everyday people, they're not going to read it and besides not read it, they don't truly understand it. So, with that being said, we need to still have education for those people that are homeowners, especially those older people who are homeowners who have no clue about that document or what it entails. I also feel that the development part of it, we can get with developers to hone in on the CDVE and the NHIF funds. So, if we have developers that are willing to work with us to do that, we can also hone in on some needed housing in different areas.
Thanks a lot. Tremendous amount of growth in redevelopment over the last two years. Every time we see a property in District Bay redevelop, not only does its property value go up, those around it do too. And many longtime District Bay residents are in shock at the reassessments they've seen on their property taxes. I'd like for each of you to tell me, if you can, what can the council do to make sure that the growth that we're seeing in District Bay doesn't actually come at the expense of our longest-time residents? And for starters, thank you.
Thank you. While there are certain homestead exemptions and senior exemptions that are in place to protect certain groups of people, also, you know, people who have been killed in the line of duty. And also, the council is the Board of Review for assessments. I would like to see that process bolstered because when we see the tax assessment appeals every year, there is not a great amount of time and energy spent on that. It's a very quick process. I don't know that people are getting the kind of notice that they need about it, but anybody can go and challenge their tax assessment based on individual circumstances and then come to the council and ask for a reduction if they don't think that their property tax assessment is correct. So, I would like to see that process used more effectively.
Although not completely within our purview, one of the places I think we must start focusing on energy is on the nonprofit exemptions that exist in the city of New Orleans. And you may say to me, "Well, Joe, that doesn't sound related to the question I asked," but it absolutely is because we have 60% of the property in the city of New Orleans that is not on the tax rules. And we also have a sales tax that's $80 million higher than the property tax that we collect. You want to get some equity here? Let's get some more of the property back into the tax rules so that way, when the assessments are starting to rise, it levels the playing field for everybody because there's more property that is being taxed across the board. I think the places to start attacking that are at the nonprofits that use property for commercial purposes. I also think property that lies fallow that isn't owned by nonprofits should be taxed just if you or I own them. And I also agree with the notion that the city council is the Board of Tax Appeal and ought to be looking particularly if tax rates are jumping up, not just incrementally, but dramatically.
As a city council, one of the things you really need to do is you need to be the shepherd for your people. You know, my brother's a Catholic priest back in Boston and that's what he always calls himself, the shepherd of his people. He's constantly looking out for his people and that's what the city council really needs to do. As far as the property, you know, we really need to make sure that we're not building just to build, not building just to make a bigger neighborhood. We need to be smart in our building. We need to be focused that our intent on keeping the neighborhood in its original state stays that way. Sure, we can improve it, but you know, you look at the stretch along Carrollton Avenue, my friends joke around and call it Little Metairie because there's so much, so much commercial development there that it's like living in a small suburb. You know, it kind of loses the New Orleans feel. So, I think as a city council, what I would do is I would just make sure that that building that happens, happens at the right level of growth with the right intent from the neighborhood that it's being built in.
Gentrification takes place most of the time because someone sells their property to someone else who purchases the property and raises the value and either sells or rents that property. A lot of the people we're talking about, in order to keep them in their homes, they're going to need access to equity so that they can continue to improve their homes and live in place in their homes. Many of the older people I talked to who still own their homes, one, they don't have access to those, to that equity. They have used some of that equity on a student loan for their grandchild or something to that effect and they simply cannot work with any of the banks. The banks don't want to work with them because of their low credit scores and so forth. We used to have in the city of New Orleans, the Community Improvement Agency that provided equity for people like that and I think we need to bring that back.
The issue with the housing in the areas is a lot of the older people, again, don't even have the exemptions. So, I, as I'm campaigning, there's an older lady, she's 87 years old, and she don't get any homestead exemption, which I couldn't understand. So, we made a few phone calls and she went down to City Hall three times. She's 87 years old, she went down three times and all three times she got the same answer, she didn't qualify. We still haven't found out why she don't qualify. Nobody has an answer. So, I feel like the city council, we have to do better with even being equipped with knowledge ourselves to know what that person can do and if we don't know, to guide them to the right people who do know. Because, like I said, three times and the same response. So, that is an issue.
The role of the assessor has a lot of leeway and that's the way the actual laws of the state read. And that is that we don't actually exempt property based on its ownership. We exempt property based on and exempt use, in other words, how it's actually being used. And the law only requires that the assessor exempt from taxation property that is being used for exempt purpose and even further, only for the amount of that property's used that is for the exempt purpose. So, say if you got a whole block of a city that's owned by a church and that's got a bookstore and all these other things on it and everything that's like that with it, you know, profit generating offices, whatever. Well, actually, the only part of it that actually is used for delivering religious services, probably the sanctuary, is actually the only part that's mandated as being exempt. And unfortunately, that doesn't happen here. We just exempt things across the board. Likewise, as far as all the other exemptions, we don't need more exemptions. If we got rid of every exemption, our tax rate would go from 150 mils to about 25. So, the fact is, we just lose out because too many people don't pay taxes.
Infrastructure, Sewer and Water Board. The mayor just appointed a team at $27,000 a week to manage the Sewer and Water Board. The city council has a Public Works Committee as well as its charter responsibility as the utility or regulatory agent for the city, ready precesses for water, gas, and electric, as well as cable. In your role as city council, what would the discussion have been like knowing that the city was budgeted to clean 15,000 drains and they only cleaned 1,500? And with that accountability which you show and knowing that money had been appropriated to be stored and cleaned each year over the last several years and that money had not been used, as well as even though council members are not on the Sewer and Water Board anymore, that in the early part of the year, several million dollars were allocated to clean, to fix turbines and pumps, but contracts were never signed.
Well, first, I think you point out the very pertinent question, which is that there is a Public Works Committee that is supposed to meet and that Public Works Committee has oversight directly of two things. Number one, catch basin maintenance and also, as I understand it, Sewer and Water Board and Joint Sewer and Water Board and Department of Public Works projects. Let me say this about that. When energy has an issue, they come to the city council in March and they say, "Here's our work hardening plan for hurricane season." And there is a matrix that they walk through with the Utilities Committee to say, "This is where we're strong. This is where we know we may have some problems during hurricane season. These are some things that we need to improve in the short and near term." Where is that for the Public Works Committee? And why aren't we doing the same thing for Sewer and Water Board? It really isn't that hard to ask. Are our pumps operating? Are the turbines working effectively? Are the catch basins being cleaned? And having, as our Republican former president said, a trust but verify system to make sure that the work that's supposed to be done is actually getting done.
We let a bunch of people go and some people left on their own, but it's something that we should have been in charge of. You know, as the city council, I think, you know, everybody's saying the mayor didn't do this, the mayor didn't do that. I think the city council as well didn't do their due diligence in the process. I think oversight is something that if we're charged to do, we should do. As far as cleaning catch basins, you know, you hear all these things about this machine didn't work, that machine didn't work, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. You know, one of the things I look at, I see twice a week cleanup, you know, trash pickup. Well, I look at it and say, "Do we really need twice a week pickup all year? How about if we do once a year pickup during the cooler months when we're not having crawfish boils every weekend and, you know, take these guys and have them clean the catch basins? You know, get them into the streets. The public works work, it's just, it's a little bit of cross and crass, but really not. You know, I mean, it's a public work function. So, I think if we really utilize all of our assets, we can get this done more efficient and oversight-weighted.
What would I have done in reaction to this money not being spent? Well, it's just ungodly to me that this keeps happening to our city. I liken this to Hurricane Katrina. The Corps of Engineers requested $13 billion before, five years before Hurricane Katrina. We didn't get the funding from Congress. Five years later, Katrina hit. It's been 12 years since Katrina. We still don't have levy protection up to a category five and we just had a category four in the Gulf. The same thing is happening with our Sewer and Water Board. We don't have a plan. We desperately need one. We need subject matter experts from around the world to come here and help lead us down the path of having a successful plan that we can follow verbatim without having to depend on the leadership that doesn't have the knowledge.
If I was sitting on the council during this time, the first thought in my mind would be, "This is truly the camel that the straw had broke the camel back. This, everybody should be tired of it." I know definitely, even for me as just a regular citizen, this is truly the twig that is breaking my back totally. I was in the flood. My children were stuck at Delacell and I was way far, too far away to even get them. So, this charter says that we have the power to demand stuff happens and I just think that the city council lost their identity. Everything that's said is about what the mayor wants. When you know in real terms, in real life, this is what we need for the city. Nobody wants to come outside their house after 30 minutes of rain and be flooded. Nobody. I know I don't. And enough is enough.
So, Sewer and Water Board is an all-out mess. I think we've realized that. Of course, don't fool yourself in thinking it's the only part of local government that's an all-out mess, but it's, every day, it seems to be worse and worse. But here's the thing, we would be a room full of willful fools if we were to buy into the idea that the Sewer and Water Board was responsible for that flood. Sewer and Water Board wasn't. Sewer and Water Board doesn't even have under its responsibilities catch basins. The city does. Public Works, run by the mayor, regulated by the council, they know every year what gets spent and what does not get spent. And the fact is, though, they chose not to do their jobs. It's called not feasance. It's a criminal offense. Right here you have, it's a Mardi Gras de Bloom, it says Elks, 1971. So, the very bottom of the catch basin I cleaned out in my street. 46 years! That means that not only did Mitch not bother to clean catch bases, but neither did his dad in every year in between. And so, that's all there, they all knew it and that's whose fault it is and it says that the accountability has to go. where the accountability has to go.
There's some misinformation going around because I want to be absolutely clear that the Sewer and Water Board is a state-created entity. Under the state statute, they absolutely do have the authority over the catch basins. They were cleaning the catch basins until the funding ran out when a drainage millage was not renewed in the 1990s, at which time the city overtook the catch basin cleaning under the Department of Public Works. And I also want to point out that the accountability on the Sewer and Water Board was by the virtue of three city council members being on that board. My opponent, Joe Gerusso, sat on the board of the Bureau of Government, Bureau of Governmental Research, with the mayor and the Bureau of Governmental Research and other groups, with great opposition, including the Office of Inspector General opposed removing. The previous council voted to have a charter amendment, and the state legislature changed the Sewer and Water Board's governance structure to remove the accountability and oversight by the city council. And so when you say that there is no oversight and that the city council had budgetary oversight, they absolutely did not. It's set by state statute, there are benchmarks that they have to follow, not including operations and funding. So let's get the truth out there, and you can read the law yourself, and read the reports where Bureau of Governmental Research recommended a 10-year rate increase and the governance reforms all at the same time. So let's just be truthful here about what's going on with the Sewer and Water Board.